Individuals wishing to address the governing board or to complete a public participation form and provide it to the governing board executive assistant, that's Mrs. Goff, prior to the start of the meeting, comments must be district-related. Thank you. Tell you one minute lasts a long time. Okay, at six o'clock, welcome everyone. We are going to begin our meeting. We're going to call to order the Apache Junction Unified School District's May 23, 2023 Governing Board Regular Meeting. We'll begin with roll call attendance. Mr. Bowers?
President.
Ms. Ross?
Present.
Ms. Garcia?
Present.
Mr. Concio?
Present.
And on present, all board members are in attendance. We have our quorum. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Item 1.4, Adoption of the Agenda. Any discussion on the agenda? Would somebody like to make a motion on the agenda?
Madam President, I move to adopt the agenda.
We have a motion. Would somebody like to second?
Second.
We have a second. Mr. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Concio?
Yes.
And on yes, that motion passes five to zero. Item 1.5, Board Meeting Minutes Not Previously Approved. That would be the May 9th and the 15th, 2023 minutes. Would somebody like to make a motion on the minutes?
Madam President, I move to approve the minutes from the May 9th and May 15th.
Yes.
May 9th and May 15th, Board Meeting Minutes.
We have a motion. Would somebody like to second?
Second.
Mr. Concio seconds. Mr. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Concio?
Yes.
And on yes, that motion passes five to zero. Onto current events. I'm going to read this so that it's transparent, so everybody understands. Item 2.1, Governing Board Report. The governing board members may present brief summary of current events pursuant to ARS 3834102K. The board members will not discuss or take action on any current event summary reports. Would somebody like to start? Mr. Bowers?
Sure. So, a couple weeks ago, I attended the scholarship night for the high school, where our seniors totaled $1.7 million in scholarships, which is amazing. So, congratulations to our hard-working seniors. These two events are this week, so I'll just go ahead and report on them now. Tomorrow is eighth grade promotion, and Thursday night is graduation at Apache Junction High School. Both of these events, those two events that I look forward to every year, they're really what we're all here for, and celebrating the accomplishments of our amazing students. So, looking forward to that. And then, one thing that I did forget to report on at our May 9th meeting, when I was at the TLC, a student there actually recognized me. She said, "I recognize your voice from YouTube." So, it was pretty cool to hear that. It's really, really, really good that she is already paying attention. That's really awesome. So, I do want to give a quick shout-out to Charlotte. Hopefully, you're listening tonight. But yeah, that's my report.
Very good. Thank you. Ms. Ross?
I was also at the scholarship night. It was really amazing to see how many students kept getting their names called over and over and over again. It was really exciting for them, and again, great to see how many students have been able to gain this money so that they can continue their education in any way that they seem to be, they deem to be positive for their development. And I was also recently at the baccalaureate. It was a small event, but very uplifting, and just felt really good to be around all of those people with such a positive message. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Garcia?
Well, the baccalaureate used to be really big back in the day, so we got to work on making it bigger, because it is kind of a special thing. In regards to promotion, eighth grade promotion and graduation, I'm really excited. It's like my favorite time of the year. And a little sad, because this is my son's, my third son, it's, he's graduating, so that's exciting but sad at the same time. But I got to attend. Two girls from the high school, they made it to state, the tennis, and boy, is that different from a football game. At the tennis match, you cannot talk, you cannot take pictures, but they made it to state, and they did really well. So, that was exciting to go watch them do their thing there. So, I wanted to congratulate them. What a fun experience that was.
Thank you. Mr. Concio?
I went to the promotion ceremony yesterday for the preschool, got promoted to kindergarten. Total of 84 children there, and those instructors, those teachers must have the patience of Job. I think I would have gone nuts. But excellent, excellent turnout. There must have been in excess of 250 parents, grandparents, and they were all there, and the cheering for all the promotions was really outstanding. Also, I didn't make it, but I did read about, we had some baseball players and some women softball players that gained honors this last week. So, big shout-out to both those teams.
Awesome. Thank you. Yes, this is a great time of year. A lot of promotions going on, a lot of celebration. I also attended the baccalaureate with Ms. Ross, and it was very uplifting. It was very nice to see these students be blessed. And, you know, it's just nice to see the transition from high school to college, and to be able to go out into the world and be blessed on this occasion. And I thought that was very uplifting, and I do believe that next year, we'll have somebody that will start from the beginning of the year and work on it throughout the year, so that it is more well-attended. It's just that we kind of started it late this year, but hopefully, next year, we'll start early on. Okay, on to item 2.2, Superintendent's Report. And I'm going to read this. The superintendent may present a brief summary of current events pursuant to ARS 3834102K. The superintendent will not discuss or take action on any current event summary reports. So, I will turn it over to Dr. Popolardo.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the governing board, and the community, and our students out there. Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Is that better?
Better.
All right, so let me start over. Thank you, Madam President, members of the governing board, community members, and the all-important are students that are sitting in the audience. Great that you're here tonight. First of all, I want to thank you very much for selecting me and letting me help to put us, to work with you, to put us on track to be one of the best school systems in the state for our size. Okay, that's number one. Number two, number two is this. Been able to visit the following campuses this week, as I talked about that I would do. So, I got to visit with the staff and faculty at Cactus Canyon, Fort Peeks, Peralta, and Desert Vista. So, those campuses have been done. I've met with the directors, I've met with the principals, and so, we have some more folks yet to do, the secretaries, registrars, payroll, all those guys. Maintenance and transportation, going to try and get that all wrapped up this week. And we are currently interviewing for the high school principal and the middle school principal. Those interviews are ongoing, and as soon as we have a selection, we will inform you who that is, as soon as we get that done. I talked to, I talked to junior high principal, so if you're going to promotion tomorrow, be there between 7:30 and 7:45. Dr. Library has sent out a video on instructions of, to be there, and has also talked a separate email about other events that are happening before the graduation, so that you can be in attendance as well. Okay, so, it's great to be here. Thank you very much. And that's what I have for now, for four days.
Great. Okay.
Oh, I have, I do have some presentations tonight, some folks that we want, that we want to come up and give recognition, give recognition for. We'll start with Mr. Jeff Struble from the Genesis Project.
Oh, there he is.
Okay, my name is Jeff Struble. I'm actually with the Rhino Recreation Center, and one of the things that we do every year is the Building America Club, and this year, we did it out at Peralta Trail. These kids are all the kids that, well, not all of them, but these are some of the kids that participated in the Building America Club this year. And what that is, is we get together pretty much on a weekly basis, and we read a book, and we teach, and we talk about how to build leadership and entrepreneurial skills at fourth and fifth grade level. And then, we talk about the five core values, which are trustworthy, hard work, integrity, responsibility, and friendliness. And we walk through that all during the year, and talk about how we do that and everything. And then, at the end of the year, the kids get to, on their own, I just get to be an adult in the room. I don't get to, I don't do anything but just be an adult and make sure that they don't do anything too crazy. But they have to come up with an idea that will, and a project that will serve the community. And they have to come up with the idea, plan it, do it, and take it through fruition. And this year, the kids decided to do a lemonade stand at Fry's Marketplace in early May, and the kids, from one to five, in the afternoon, raised $529.13. And the other thing that they have to do is they get to decide where the money's going to go, and this year, the kids chose that the money was going to go to the Genesis Project, which, if you don't know, that's the local food kitchen that feeds the homeless and the needy in the community. And... I take that as a no. So, anyway, just backstory on that. Like I said, the kids had to do everything. I was there just to make sure that, I was an adult, and they got to do all the selling, all the approaching the people, asking if they wanted to buy a cup of lemonade for a dollar. And you understand that, the lemonade cup was a dollar. We raised $529.13, but we only sold 150 cups of lemonade. So, that tells you that these kids went out and got people to donate money over and above what the lemonade sales were. And it was really heartwarming to watch these kids just go out, and they understood what they were doing. These kids are a great example of what we have in Apache Junction and our school system, of when you give them a project, give them the opportunity and resources, they will attain what they go for. And I just want to commend these young people for what they did, and I know because, I know that they have a great future, because one of, a young man who had done this, the Building America Club, six years ago in our first year, showed up and bought a cup of lemonade, and told the kids that he had been in it six years before, and now he's going in to be a senior at the high school. So, I look forward to watching you kids grow, grow even better and bigger, and serve the community in even bigger and better ways, okay? And Trinity couldn't be here from Genesis Project. She wasn't feeling well, but we'll make sure she gets this and make that all right. So... No, that's okay. That's okay. Anyway, give these kids a big hand.
Thank you so much. I think we have more?
Yes, we do. Our next presenter, our next presenter is Eric Ariola from Superstition Community Food Bank.
I'm pretty labored. I don't know if you need... Good evening, Board, Superintendent, and attendees. My name is Eric Ariola, and I'm the Executive Director for the Superstition Community Food Bank. Our mission is to work with the community to ensure that no one goes hungry in Apache Junction and its surrounding areas. In 2022, we served 37,648 individuals, 13,916 families, and 11,486 students, all facing food insecurities, and may not have otherwise been able to provide food for themselves. I would like to publicly thank the following AJ Schools and AJ USD employees for helping the food bank this year. Behavior and academic interventionist Michael Brown and the Peralta Trail Elementary School for hosting a school-wide food drive yielding 643 pounds of food.
Wow.
You could clap. Fifth-grade teacher Karenza Claus and the Desert Vista Elementary School with an amazing school-wide food drive, bringing in a whopping 2,434 pounds of food. And there's a special mention to Mrs. Mitchell's class for taking first place in that contest. The Apache Junction High School, the Student Council, and the National Honor Society both hosted school-wide food drives. They brought in 187 pounds of food. And then, most recently, our biggest food drive of the year is the Letter Carriers Postal Food Drive called Stamp Out Hunger. It's an annual food drive that is held nationwide the second day of May, and the second Saturday in May, and it's every year, and it's been happening for 31 years. And we, because we're the only food bank in AJ, get to be the lucky recipients of that food. The letter carriers go out that day, and they bring back all the food that's left at the mailboxes, and it all comes back to the food bank. So, when Coach Binkley heard that we were going to need an army of volunteers, he volunteered the football team to come and help us that Saturday. So, we had 35 individuals from the football team lending us their muscle for the Stamp Out Hunger food drive, and they helped us unload a record-setting 26,000 pounds that Saturday, just two weeks ago. So, yeah. So, it is through all these partnerships that we're able to fulfill our mission of feeding those in need. But more so, this is an opportunity to teach these young students the meaning of community, compassion, and charity. So, I thank you for your time. I thank you for your partnership with the food bank, and I invite you to continue to refer those in need to the Superstition Community Food Bank, whether it be family, friends, students, and their families. We are here for the community. I wish you guys a wonderful summer, and we'll see you next school year. And if there's anybody from those schools here tonight, I have certificates, and if you could take those back for me, that would be amazing. So, just see me afterwards, okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next presenter is Robin Gonzalez for the Elks Lodge.
Thank you. I'm Robin Gonzalez, and I'm the Curriculum Coordinator for the school district. And so, one of the programs that we're fortunate enough to have is, it's AVID. And so, that is advancement via individual determination. So, we were very fortunate. Five years ago, we brought AVID into our district, and so, over the course of those years, we have watched students grow academically, with their, just being become more responsible, advocating for themselves, just really that whole child development. And this year, we are going to have our first AVID graduate. So, we're very excited. So, it's a first for Apache Junction. So, that's a huge accomplishment for our students and a celebration. May 1st, we had our first annual banquet for our seniors. And so, we, in partnership with the Elks Lodge, we were able to have a dinner for the families. It was decorated beautifully, and we just, we had a really good night, and we were able to recognize those seniors the way that they should be recognized. We wanted to thank the Elks Lodge today, because they support us in so many ways. And so, today, we're really recognizing them through just their partnership, first annual with the AVID banquet. But as you know, the Elks, they support us in so many ways. The Hoop Shoe, recognizing our Students of the Month, they are there for us in so many ways consistently. So, we absolutely want to recognize and thank the Elks Lodge tonight for AVID, but also just for everything they do. So, you really do support our students and our schools, and we just want you to know how much we appreciate you. Richard Barner has a certificate. Our AVID, our officers, they actually signed that certificate for you, so much appreciation. They assisted us by donating $2,500 for our banquet. So, very generous, and so much appreciation. We appreciate you guys so much. Thank you. And their scholarships. So, yes, thank you so much.
All right. Thank you, everyone. How exciting. Okay, we're on to 2.3, Public Comments. Speakers are asked to limit their comments to three minutes, so that everyone who wishes to speak will have the opportunity. Per ARS 3843102H prohibits the governing board from discussing items which are not on the agenda. If the item you're addressing is not on the agenda, please do not expect the board to answer questions or discuss the issue with you. Thank you. We will begin with Mary Gregory. Welcome, Mary.
Good evening, Governing Board, Superintendent, and all of the guests. I haven't been here in a while, but holding this microphone. But I'm here just to let you know, we appreciate you so much. I know you spend a lot of time with, helping with children. And so, we just want you to know that you are in our prayers. And we have a group, we're gathering a group of prayer warriors for our Apache Junction School Board and School District. So, we just want you to know, you're in our prayers. And any special requests, just let me know, and we'll get at it. And thank you. This was wonderful tonight to get to see this. So, thank you.
Tiffany Benson?
So, AJ USD community members, if you're willing to go beyond the veil of false narratives, you'll see a radical board member working with leftists and targeting three duly-elected officials. He claims they bullied and harassed your previous superintendent, but I think she left on her own accord in response to demands for transparency and accountability. We, the people, want to know why AJ USD is spending 10K a year per student, but elementary and middle school math proficiency is 34%, and 16% for high school. Why is reading 38% and 21%? What are they doing with other people's money and other people's kids? What I found out is that they're teaching your kids to mobilize unlawful protests during school hours. So, is political activism in the core curriculum, or is it an elective? Were the kids on a field trip when ABC 15 showed up? The pattern that I see is the longer students attend AJ USD, the more they regress academically, they descend into lawlessness and mental health issues. And I believe parents should look into ESA if there's no change next school year. Regardless of political leans, I hope the new superintendent works with all board members. Regardless of political leans, I hope the new superintendent works with all board members to improve the quality of education. I also want you to know that on a list of seven authorized topics approved for executive session, the Ombudsman website ranked personnel issues as number one, yet the public knows details of closed meetings. So it appears some board members and administrators are using confidential information to leverage their public image, and we're still researching just exactly how many laws were broken. So my call to action for the public is to expose the corruption at AJ USD. You can visit schoolboardwatchlist.org, that's schoolboardwatchlist.org, and submit an investigation request. Lastly, for the radical board member who also proudly supports Black Lives Matter, this is a racist, cop-hating organization that destroys black lives. And I want to be clear, if you're for BLM, you're against me and my community, and you are racist if you support BLM. I hate to name-call, but Bobby Bowders is the board member who should be exposed and expelled.
Thank you.
Mrs. Kimball. Mrs. Kimball, I want to call for a break, so if the parents with the kids want to leave, they can. I'd like to call for a break.
You want to call them in a break?
Yep.
Okay, we're going to take a five-minute break.
Not livestreamed, so only those who were present could weigh in on their choice for the future superintendent. On May 16th, in a session that was yet again not livestreamed, the governing board held a special meeting on various items that would include an interview with a new candidate. This and other action items related to it passed in a three-two vote. Should be noted that prior to the meeting, Dr. Popolardo was identified by multiple staff and community members as being in attendance and was also seen entering the executive session regarding the interview. On May 18th, Dr. Popolardo was hired as the new superintendent. So we are left with the following questions. Where did Dr. Popolardo's application come from? As he did not apply between 4/18 and 5/3 when the application process was open. Why did Dr. Popolardo, who retired approximately 10 years ago, feel the need to acquire his superintendent certification in March 2023? A process that had to have started before Dana Kimball announced a meeting with Heather Wallace. Why was Dr. Popolardo seen with Vice President Concio prior to the 5/16 meeting being congratulated and shaking hands for a position he hadn't yet interviewed for? And how much does it cost a district to have a lawyer available for all the executive sessions that have been conducted over the last four to five months? Thank you.
Raymond Cunningham.
It would be an understatement to say that I'm only concerned about the personnel report for tonight's meeting and that of 25 April and May 9. Tremendous amount of talent, not to mention dedication and experience, has left the district and its elementary and secondary schools. I don't really know what's going on. I don't know what the factors are that cause this tremendous exodus. But usually, not always, usually, it's a sign that there's problems at the top, which would be the five of you. And so I want each of you, if possible, to do a serious internal introspection on your own behavior, your own decisions, and see if there's something that can help get us out of this mess. I have nothing against the new superintendent. I've never known him, never heard of him. But I know that he has a tremendous challenge above and beyond simply coming in to this district. And I wish him the best. He's been chosen, so let's support him. But four of the five of you, I've been able to watch for more than, much more than three years. I haven't seen Ms. Ross quite as long. And I believe that all of you sincerely care about this district. I don't have any reservations about that. But we have some serious personnel issues to address. And I wish you the very best.
Thank you. Roberto Ravelas.
Roberto Ravelas, 30-year resident of the school district, supporter of every single attempt to adequately fund the school district. The past year, however, has to me been the most concerning in the entire past two decades that I've been a committed supporter of adequate funding for this school district, for its students, the parents and the teachers and administrators. This past five months has been the most obtuse process I've ever witnessed with a public school board. There has been no transparency. There have been many questions. And there has been an inordinate silenced portion of agenda for public input. Out of the past 15 board meetings, nine of them have been special sessions with no call to the public allowed. And I agree with some of the previous speakers who are raising questions about what has happened to this school district. I think it's clear and simple. When I recall back before the election, seeing exchanges of emails politicizing the process of a nonpartisan school board, sadly, I think the public has been duped by the process. There are many legal questions still afoot concerning partisan contributions to candidates to this school board. So I too join others in the public. Please become more transparent. For example, the severance agreement, who knows how much it costs because it has not been made public or available to the public. Please turn away from politicization of this school board. Thank you.
Thank you. Jack Machion. Sorry, Jack. I didn't pronounce it right. Machion.
I'm gonna kind of keep track of my notes here on my cell phone. So a friend of mine reminds me that I chase rabbits. I want to make sure I don't do that too much tonight. I just want to say I really admire your abilities to get through all this chaos you've gone through. And I'm welcoming Dr. Popolardo here. I've briefly talked with him. He sounds like a very competent individual who's probably gonna make this school an A school, make everybody in the community very happy, just give him the opportunity. And I think the school board will probably follow suit. What I'm concerned about, I guess, the reason I came here tonight, is the cost that's being generated by a recall. I think someone mentioned it already earlier. They kind of hide that. I've talked to a couple people, and I think maybe even, I think if there's an Andrew out here, I talked to him. He didn't know what the cost was gonna be when I talked to him. But the cost is 120 grand per election. That's a low estimate, according to Dana Lewis, the recorder, who I actually personally talked to about the cost. That's a lot of money. So it could be for two recalls, that's 240 grand, and it's probably gonna be more than that, actually. But the cost of the money is not what the cost of your image. The image that you acquired as a result of someone on this board, which I'll name because I, someone else named it, Bobby, Bobby Bowers. He violated the law April the 10th on a confidentiality executive session. I watched him do it. Another individual did. However, that individual actually contacted me when I sent an email asking for her resignation. So she is a little more commutative with people who may disagree. However, Bobby, he never bothered to call me. He never bothered to communicate with me. I'm here to tell you that I researched you. I looked at your LinkedIn account. You are a freelance Democratic advocate, okay? An advocate. That means partisan dude. And what it also is, you are associated with the school board. So I'm gonna ask you right here publicly, you can't respond, but I want to know, are you selling influence out there with your, similar to what was going on in Washington, DC with our Biden, President Biden? Is that what you're doing? The other thing is, if you're not peddling, you know, that sounds kind of partisan to me. You're accusing all these people, these fine people who are professionals. You're not a professional. These guys are professionals. They've done a lot of work for this community. You're just starting out, and you're accusing them of stuff and making allegations that make this community look bad. No one's gonna want to come to school here. Your attendance is gonna drop, but I think Dr. Popolardo is gonna turn that around. And I think people like you need to resign from office. The other thing I'd like to mention is, you need to take, see, one of the things I did in my life as a psychotherapist, I worked for a medical school, we had a remedial class. And you should go to school on what executive session is and find out what you broke the law on.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm good.
Okay, we are gonna move on to item three, consent agenda. Somebody like to make a motion on the consent agenda?
Madam President, I'm moved to approve the consent agenda.
We have a motion. Would somebody like to second?
Second.
Ms. Garcia, seconds. Mr. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Concho?
Yes.
And yes, that motion passes five to zero. Onto information and discussion items. These are matters about which the board may engage in discussion and will take no action during the meeting. Item 4.1, Schools Facilities Board Monthly Update. Larry Hill. Now, I know it's not Schools Facilities Board anymore, right?
No, it's DF. DSF.
DSF. I gotta get used to that. Okay, DSF.
Hey, Madam President, member of the board, Superintendent Popolardo. Yeah, where we're at with our DSF projects, I'll start with the high school. We're just about ready to close out the weatherization portion of it. We are about halfway through the roofing part of the project, on the roofing. On grading and drainage, we're in design on that one. And then over at Cactus Canyon, the weatherization, we're just about done. We got one more punch list to walk through. And we're getting close to starting the roofing. And the bleachers and the gym floor, we're really close. We just got a non-critical letter on, we can go ahead with that, but we won't not be able to build till after July because the DSS is out of money.
Right.
So we're gonna sit on that for a week or so and see how everything goes there before we move forward. Over at Fort Peaks, Friday, we have a pre-construction meeting on the weatherization and roofing. And then we're gonna get going on that one. And then at Desert Vista, we're about halfway done with the weatherization. It's pretty much painted, but they're installing new window frames now, and then we have doors to do, and then the hardware. And grading and draining on that campus is in assessment, so that's being assessed now. And we're still waiting for the okay out at Peralta for their weatherization and roofing. But I talked to Mr. Cantrell earlier today, and it looks like DSF has spent about 16 million so far, a little over 16 million on that. I don't have the number on the district's part, but that's about where we're at on that.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Hill? Cammy, you okay down there?
No.
That's 16 million dollars out of the building renewal grants, right?
Yes, sir.
Which means we had, we didn't have to go out for a bond issue.
Correct.
Okay.
Ms. Bowers, any questions? Ms. Ross?
No, thank you.
So when you say we have to wait till July for us to finish the submission for the floor, is that what you're talking about? For payment? Or how is that working?
DSF gave us a letter to, we can go ahead and do purchase order and start the work at Fort Peaks.
Okay.
But we can't bill till July.
Oh, so you can't just bill?
Yeah, we can't send the pay apps through yet. But we're gonna have our construction meeting this Friday, so it's gonna be a good month before they, the contractor is ready to bill us anyways.
Okay. But so do you think that after that, we'll be able to get the funding?
Yes, when DSF gets their funding, they'll get their funding in July.
Okay.
And then they're gonna be.
We're sure we're gonna get it done.
Yeah, otherwise they wouldn't send us that letter to go ahead and receive.
Is this what we talked about last week or the week prior?
Yeah, we might have.
Is this the same thing where we help, we're just getting a letter out and then waiting?
Yeah.
Is this the same thing? Okay.
But I think like even tonight, like to approve the gym floor and all that, we're gonna have to lay out the money, basically, and then get reimbursed, correct?
Yeah, that's how we kind of do it anyways. We usually, Casey Roots, she's a pro at this, she sends in the pay apps for us to get reimbursed.
Right.
Big help.
Okay. And it shouldn't be too far of a gap, right? Okay. All right, thank you. Okay, 4.2, Fiscal Year 2024 Budget Discussion. Ms. Terry.
Good evening. I presented, I put an attachment for the budget projections for next school year. We've got some information from the governor that signed the budget, but it has not been official yet because legislature is still in session. So we do not have budget forms yet. I'm hoping that they get those forms out pretty soon. Otherwise, we might have to have a special session at the end of June in order to propose our budget. I did the proposed budget based on a 4% weighted ADM reduction. In the middle bit there, you can see what our trends are for ADM. So even though last year and the year before really didn't see a 4%, I just feel like it's still not quite balancing out since COVID kind of made that go up and down drastically. So the good thing about that is if we do start with a reduction, reduction of 4%, any amount of ADM that we get next year, we can recoup that when we do a budget revision at the end of the year.
Okay.
So we can actually recoup that and then add that to our budget then. I did a summary down below of what we expect for, how that budget allocation will be for MNO. I did not do anything for capital at this time. We're still putting some things together, and I know we're gonna talk a little bit more about a plan for the future as well.
Right.
Right, I kind of went low on the estimated amounts for carryover for next year that we have right now, especially with capital. I'm expecting that that could go up based on what the POs that we can close out. So our department has been working on that to get those closed out, and that'll release those budget, that budget capacity back in there, and then I'll give a clearer picture of that.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Terry?
I don't have anything.
No? Mr. Concho?
No, I don't have anything.
Mr. Batters?
No questions. I just, I would prefer to go with the 4% decline in ADM. Even though I don't think it's gonna be quite that much of a decline, I would much rather have some cushion as kind of a safety net. And if we have carryover at the end of the year, even better. That's, that's one of my biggest concerns. I'd like to see some more carryover. So I think we can accomplish that with a 4% decline, so I, that's what I would favor.
Ms. Ross?
I'm fine, thanks.
Okay. So two things. One, I gotta say, I love the way you did the report.
Trying to keep it consistent.
I love it. It's amazing. Good job. And I do agree about the 4%. I think, I know that's what we usually do, and it does give us a little cushion, just to be safe. Also, my concern is, you know, the cost for the recall that we're hearing about, is that something that you can address as far as confirm with the county what the cost is, and then what it's gonna look like for our budget?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Terry.
You're welcome.
4.3, Activities, Clubs, Athletics, Professional Growth, Supplemental Schedules for 2023-2024 School Year. Mr. Hazel?
Good evening, Madam President, board members. In months past, we approved the pay next year for teachers and administrators, et cetera. This one is specifically for stipends for coaches, club sponsors. On the supplemental assignments, you'll find these stipends for athletic director, hard-to-fill stipends such as math and science, high school teachers, special ed teachers throughout the district, just to name a few. And then on our professional growth schedule, it's what we do to reward our, typically our non-exempt employees with, who have college credits that they have earned. And it's something we do annually. This is just to make it official for the 23-24 school year.
Has there been any changes?
We increased the subpay just to make it in line with the increased minimum wage that took place January 1st. Outside of that, I believe that was the revision, subpay making it falling in line with the new minimum wage.
Any questions for Mr. Hazel?
So that's a little bit higher, the change.
Yes. Yeah, we took the 1385 into account and multiplied by the number of hours they typically work and erupted that flat daily rate. If I remember correctly, this, the, I believe the athletics stip, the athletic schedule was brought up in a previous board meeting.
Right.
And I think the one change was varsity soccer, if I remember correctly.
I think so.
That increased a bit. But other than that, all the sports, coaching stipends remain the same.
Mr. Concho, any questions?
I don't have anything this time.
Mr. Batters?
So last time we spoke about this, I talked about how I was concerned about the, the current levels for sped. I just feel like, I know as, as a district, our goal is to move away from contracted services. And I don't feel that we can even start to think about that until we can make our district more attractive for special education employees. And so I just, just in my opinion, I don't feel like these are adequate, and I would like to see an increase, but that's just me.
Thank you, I'll certainly look at that.
Ms. Ross?
I just have one question, because I've never seen this. What's, what's the 1, 2, 3, 4? Those are those level things again?
Yes, for the coaching and the club sponsors, it's very similar to the teaching schedule you see. And those are step, step movement.
Steps, that's what I meant.
And yeah, they are steps. Right now, everyone's still on step one. We haven't made any proposals to move beyond step one.
Okay.
But that's what they're for.
All right, thank you.
So Mr. Hazel, I agree. Can you bring back some comparables for the sped?
Certainly.
That would be good.
Yes.
And I know I asked a while ago, if we could get the numbers of students that are in these programs, just get an idea of how many students are participating, like in...
In the special ed programs?
No, 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 in like the bands and the, you know, the other ones.
Oh.
Like...
Yes.
I know it was not really directly related to this, but I just want to know, like, how many kids are participating?
In each sport?
Yeah, like to know, like who's in, how many are in choir, how many are in orchestra, drama, things like that.
Yes, I will do that.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I have a question.
Oh, Mr. Concho has a question?
On the supplemental assignment schedule, hard-to-fill math and science, why the difference for, between the algebra, geometry, and then all of a sudden Algebra II? And then we have biology at, and physical science at II, yet we've got anatomy at III and chemistry at III?
The, the freshman and sophomore level classes were at $2,000, and the junior and senior level classes were at $3,000.
Oh, so these, so it's, has nothing to do with the topic or with the subject, it's the level?
Correct. Correct, yeah.
All right.
Freshmen and sophomores at II. And again, that's, those stipends are for a full-time 1.0 FTE. So we do have teachers, as an example, who teach two geometry classes and three Algebra II classes. So we adjust that.
Okay.
And then, Mrs. Kimball, just have one more question?
Sure.
Can we work on with Dr. Popolardo the tier system when we, like, I mean, there's no movement. So when we talk about this tier system?
Right.
You have coaches that have been here for four or five years. Plus, we need to work on the movement and see how we can structure that.
Sure.
When we're working on the salaries and stuff.
Be happy to sit down with you. We have a meeting coming up, and we can start to talk about it, and then we can talk with everyone and see where we can go. I'll talk with Chad Cantrell when he gets back and discuss it with the AD at the high school and see what's equitable, okay?
Okay.
How's that?
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Okay, let's see, we're on 4.4, extra dollar an hour, extra pay for food services and $2 an hour extra pay for non-exempt grounds maintenance staff for each hour worked for the 2023-2024 school year. Mr. Hazel?
So this is something we did this year for the 22-23 school year, and we'd like to continue it next year. It was an incentive for our employees who, as it says, for each hour worked. So this wouldn't apply if they called in sick or used their leave. And just for some dollar amounts, so you're aware, the extra dollar for food services with taxes included is approximately $43,000 paid through food services. And for the grounds maintenance, the extra $2 amounts to $96,000 approximately in salary and taxes, and that's paid through ESER.
Yes. Any questions? Mr. Batters?
So when ESER is expended, what's our plan to sustain this?
I was gonna ask the same question.
We're gonna have, that's gonna be part of our strategic and goal setting. We gotta talk about those things and how we cope with the loss of those funds over time, okay? And what, what we're gonna prioritize and what we're gonna do about it. And that's part of attracting the students and moving towards an award-winning district and schools everywhere so that we can sustain over time.
Any other questions? Ms. Ross?
Nope.
No? Ms. Garcia? Mr. Concho?
No.
That was my concern also about the ESER's running out. Item 4.5, ASBA 2023 Political Agenda Discussion. We were all given our 2023 political agenda to pick the ones that we feel are important. Mrs. Goff was nice enough to compile them for us. Good job, Mrs. Goff.
She loves doing that.
So we are able to pick five, and then additional two as a backup. I'm gonna let Mr. Batters take over on this, because he's been handling it for us.
Yeah, so thank you, Ms. Goff, for compiling this. It makes it a lot easier to decide what we're gonna move forward with. So in previous years, the way we usually do this is we take a look at the compiled list, and first we pick off the ones where we have a majority. So there's two of them. Let's see, I'll go in order. And you said you're part of this, right? Okay. So the first one is under adequately and equitably fund district schools, this first section. And then the constitutional aggregate expenditure limit to reflect current education funding levels and priority via legislative referral to the voters. That one is marked down for myself, Mrs. Ross, and Mrs. Kimball. And then the other one, which has a very big majority, is on the other side, improve outcomes for all students. This is the fully restunning, fully restoring ninth grade and 13th CTE and CTED funding. So I think we can go ahead and assume that those two will be part of our five.
Sure. I'm good with that. You guys good with that?
Did you say on the equitable one, the first?
Three.
The amended constitutional?
Yeah, I added mine late.
Oh, you added it, okay.
Sorry. I picked more than five.
Okay, yeah, I picked seven. I picked seven, so I'm not a rule player. Okay, so that first one, and then the improve outcome, we have myself, Mrs. Kimball, Ms. Ross, and Dr. Popolardo, that one.
Right.
Okay.
Which one was that?
The second, the CT.
Oh, the CT, okay, gotcha.
Where's the first one?
Are you okay with that, Ms. Ross?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. All right, so seems like at least the majority is okay with that. So we have two out of the main five, and then we can also submit two more kind of alternates. So does anyone have a strong opinion on what else needs to be included?
Well, one of the ones that I've been passionate about, and I think I put this on every single year, is provide the full-time funding for preschool programs in K through 12 funding formula, only because we know that early childhood education is really important, you know? And I think that, I mean, it should be funded, so.
I agree. I was gonna pick that one, but Mrs. Goff told me I had to stop picking. So I would agree with that one as well.
Yeah, and I put that one down as well. I very strongly believe that pre-K should be the pre-K to 12 formula, not the K12 formula.
I agree.
So...
So, Mr. Concho, are you okay with that one?
I'm all right with that.
Ms. Ross?
That's fine.
Okay. So that's number three. Anyone else have any?
I've got one right at the very top. Eliminate unfunded mandates and administrative burdens.
Yes, please.
There's no reason why we should have to end up trying to... There's no reason why we should have to end up trying to find the money at our level for mandates that come from higher up, oh, you're gonna do this, you're gonna do that. And then we've got to scrimp and save or steal from educational programs because we've got to meet some administrative burden that somebody decides to come up with.
I very strongly agree with that. And that, that's one that, again, I wanted to put down, but I hit my limit too.
Ms. Garcia, how you feel about that one?
I think that one's okay.
Ms. Ross?
I, I agree.
Yeah, okay. So that's number four.
Eliminate unfunded mandates?
Mm-hmm. Ms. Garcia, do you have one you're passionate about?
The advocate to preserve and protect the voters, that, the Prop 301. I have you, Dr. Popolardo, and I like that one as well. And I think that, that is... One that, I mean, but there's a couple others too that...
There's so many, I know.
Yeah. We have the one on the back, the state standardized testing, that Mrs. Ross picked and myself. There's that one. It's whatever you guys...
So I, I agree with the 301 and the standardized testing. So, how about you, Mr. Concha? Do you have to choose either one or the other?
I've got, I've got a couple of them that I'm still looking at here. I've got to go with the last one, the funding for individual districts implement locally-directed school safety programs as well as student mental health and well-being initiatives. I mean, we've had, we've had two incidents.
Which one is that?
Under school safety.
School safety and security. And that's probably my background, you know, rising to the surface and it's like...
I think you and I, Ms. Garcia, are on that one.
What's that, I'm sorry?
The, you and I picked that one.
School safety and security.
You go with that?
Want to make that our fifth?
Sure. Mr. Bowers, what do you have?
Top five is, I'm not gonna read them all or fully, but fully restore ninth and 13th grade CTE and CTED. Amend the aggregate expenditure limit. Provide full-time funding for pre-K programs in the K12 funding formula. Eliminate unfunded mandates. And then the last one, provide funding for school safety and mental health, well-being initiatives. And then we can choose two more alternates.
Two more alternates, so...
I did have one. Provide funding for new space for existing schools before they exceed their maximum capacity. I feel like that's kind of the conundrum we find ourselves in right now, where we know we need new, new sites, but the, the DSS isn't interested or even able to fund those new sites because our existing sites aren't full yet.
Right.
But I don't want our sites to get full.
Right.
Because if they're, if they're bursting at the seams, then that's a problem.
Right. What do you think?
And that's, there would be an alternate, I think, yeah.
Okay.
It makes sense to me.
Okay.
Ms. Ross?
Need to be able to plan ahead, not try to play catch-up.
Just want to be sure too that we addressed the 301 funding?
We did. I think that was one, it was our number...
And the second part of that is that we don't make teaching very attractive when the state legislature or others decide that they don't want to promote teaching. So I think that could be a good alternate, that we need to attract people to this profession and not demonize them.
Right.
As teachers.
Okay, thank you. So what's the other one?
We don't have the 301 down, but we can make that an alternate.
Yeah.
Well, we had, that one was, Kimball and Popolardo picked that one.
I thought we did.
I mean, well, there were two people that picked it anyway.
Yeah.
We did.
I think we did.
Oh, we did?
Yeah.
Oh, then I must have not counted correctly.
Okay. Do you want to go over them real quick?
Yeah, let's go over them really quickly. Okay, so...
The CTE one?
Top five is the CTE.
Right.
Number two is aggregate expenditure limit.
Right.
Pre-K for number three.
Right.
Number four is unfunded mandates. And then number five is the school safety.
Okay, so we missed one?
Yeah.
Because I had the Prop 301.
Okay, so then we need to choose one of our top five to replace.
I'm not, I'm not, okay, but we're moving preschool.
Yeah, I know, I want to keep that too.
So we'll keep that one. So the 301 should replace. What was the one you said before that?
The school safety grant?
Can somebody explain to me a little bit more about the, the school safety, mental health thing? Because I thought we were, you know, we're responsible to do that anyway. So I'm not sure where that falls in the imperative.
Part of that would end up being, or having to deal with basically school security or another word, another way would be to look at it as SROs.
Right, but I mean...
We have a grand total right now of one dare officer and two SROs to cover the entire district. Okay? Now, initially, that might look good for here in Apache Junction. However, the district goes as far east as Queen Valley. There's a little place called Peralta Trail Elementary School that has nothing, except we've got 300 students plus faculty and other supporting staff that are out there. Something goes down out there...
I understand. We should have somebody on every campus and I can imagine why we're not doing that.
Exactly. And the thing about it is, is that because it's outside of the city boundaries, it now becomes a county issue. There have been discussions. And there will be continuing discussions about getting a deputy on out there.
You know, again, as I said, I, I don't understand why there's not at least one person on every campus. And I would imagine that that should be addressed, right? Through the near future?
That's something that...
That's to be part of our long-term goals and part of the board...
Getting a little bit...
Right. We're getting a little ahead of where...
We're getting, we're getting into the weeds.
Yeah.
Right, but that shouldn't be something that I think the ASBA should be involved in. That's something that we should do ourselves, am I correct?
Well, we're, we're gonna work with our local community to do that. So one thing I want to interject here, and I know that Mr. Cantrell's not here, but something that he shared with me, which I think is kind of good news for us. So under the ESER grant, you know, we were using funds for the SRO?
Right.
Okay. And so, no, okay, never mind, can't do that. That's right, you're right, okay.
It's not part of the agenda that we got...
We'll, we'll talk about it next meeting. We'll make it part of the agenda, okay?
Well, we're talking about school safety, Mrs. Goff?
Yeah, but it's, it's not a listed item, so I can't go that far.
Okay.
Maybe to help us kind of decide, we can, so we choose five and our two alternates, but just as a reminder to the board, when I go to the delegate assembly, you can give me instructions to add an amendment. So if you feel really strongly about one, but it's not included, you can give me direction to make sure that that is included some way or another. Just want to throw that out there.
So do, so, Mr. Bowers, go over the, the ones that we have right now one more time.
Okay, so number one is restore CTED funding.
Right.
Number two is the aggregate expenditure limit.
Right.
Number three is pre-K in the funding formula.
Right.
Number four is unfunded mandates. And number five, I have as the school safety grant.
Okay.
I have number five as a 301.
That's what you had as number five?
Is that correct? I thought number five is our 301.
Right. So let's just do those as five.
Okay.
Okay. And then do the, the other two as the other option?
So which two, just so we're clear?
Mr. Concha was passionate about the safety one.
That was number five.
And then unfunded mandates.
Okay, then we, then we have one more, because unfunded mandate was number four.
Okay.
So we can either get rid of that and make it an alternate, or we can choose one more alternate.
Okay. What do you think? Come on, Garcia.
Well, if we're going with what we were talking about, it was two or more.
Right.
And so now we're looking at our sheet and there's one board member for one thing and then, like, we're getting off track of what we talked about doing, so...
Well, don't get me started on the tax credit one.
Right.
I'm trying to be, I'm trying to behave myself.
I mean, it's hard because there's several important ones.
I, I agree with Dr. Popolardo's suggestion, the support teaching as a profession. Or yeah, we, or yeah, let's do, or, or, no, we decided the real one would be one of the top five.
Right.
Okay. And then we're keeping unfunded mandates in our top five?
Is that within the five?
Yeah.
Okay, so then leave that in the five?
Yeah.
And so then we do the safety as an alternative and we need one more, right?
Right.
Right.
Okay. So... Ms. Garcia and Ms. Ross have the standardized testing. I'd be good with that one.
I would like to, I really think that the testing needs to be kind of revamped a little bit.
Okay. You go with that, Ms.?
I like that.
Yeah, that's an alternate.
All right. So let me just go through it one more time. Top five, number one is restore CTE, CTED funding. Number two is the aggregate expenditure limit. Number three is pre-K in the funding formula. Four is unfunded mandates. Five is Prop 301. And our alternates will be state standardized testing, not used for anything other than year, year-over-year, and then the school safety, mental health, and well-being initiatives.
All right.
Got it.
Got it.
All right, so Mrs. Goff, you have all those? Okay.
Got it?
Yeah, she's got it.
Okay. Okay, on to item 4.6, policy BEDB agenda discussion. I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Bowers. This was a request by you to put on the agenda.
Yeah, so I requested this to be discussed. And my, my, my recommendations for changing this policy is actually really simple. I think in order to both be transparent and also make things simple for the public, I would like to add, so if you look right here on regular meetings, item number F is already slated for public comments, and I would like to add that in our special meeting agenda as well. So this would make, mean that public comments will be automatically on, unless I'm forgetting some sort of meeting, would be automatically on every meeting's agenda.
Okay, so you want to amend the policy?
Yes.
Okay. Any discussion on that? Ms. Garcia?
So basically, no matter if it's a work session or a regular board meeting, you're requesting public comments to be on every meeting? Is that what you're saying? Sorry, I'm having a hard time right down here.
Yeah, am I not speaking into it?
No, I just, I'm just having, my ears were clogged, so I'm having a hard time.
Well, this, this policy doesn't actually even address work sessions, so that could also be something to look into. I, just my opinion, I think, keep it simple and add it to every agenda, but that's just me. So...
I, as far, I don't mind having, you know, public comments on the two meetings a month, but a special meeting usually is for a specific item, for the most part. And I just feel like, you know, I want to just get my meeting, do what I need to do and be done. Whatever, whatever needs to be said can be said the other two times that we're meeting, in my, in my opinion.
Okay. Mr. Concha?
I agree with Mrs. Ross. The other thing too is, or you, Mr. Bowers, are you trying to get public comment on the executive sessions?
No, 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 special meetings.
Just special meetings.
Just special meetings, but then you also have, you have regular meetings where we already, I mean, we've gotten regular meeting comments, public comments. You can get anywhere from six to 24, 25. And you have to take a look at the amount of time. And special meetings, usually we call that for taking care of immediate things.
Well, I'd like to hear from the public on their opinions on those immediate things.
Madam President?
Yes.
Members of the board, why don't we research what the districts are doing locally?
Okay.
About special meetings, you know? We can, we can call around and find out, you know, bring it back for further discussion.
Okay.
And then it'll be easier to make a determination because you're be in line with...
What others are doing?
The districts, surrounding districts around you, you know what I mean?
That sounds like a plan.
Then you can, you'll have more information that way.
That's a good idea. Okay, so we'll just bring it back and have more discussion and then possible action on it? Okay?
And I believe...
I'm sorry?
I, I believe their ASBA's policy services, if we do decide we want to make a change, we just contact them and say, these are the changes we'd like to make. And then they send us a revised policy to then take action on.
Okay. Do you want to just have more discussion before we do the action so that we can get back to do that?
I think we can have more discussion.
Okay, so we'll just add it for discussion next time.
Well, yeah, to tell ASBA like what we're actually looking for.
Right, okay. Sounds like a plan.
The other item, and I noted it just unfortunately late last night, but regular meetings, okay, we have, and we made a motion of, well, would have been first part of the year, to go ahead and have a moment of silence. And it's not on here, probably not all the districts in the state end up having a moment of silence, but it is our policy. I think we should end up including that in our policy.
I agree.
I also would note that we agreed to move public comments before recognitions and on here it's labeled as after. So I think either way, we probably need to update this policy anyway.
Okay, so let's bring it back for discussion. All right, we're on to 4.7. First read review for the new policy revision as follows. Policy IGA, curriculum development. Policy IGD, curriculum adoption. Policy, I'm just gonna make sure I say that right, IIJ, textbook supplementary materials selection and adoption. Policy JLCD, RNEB, medicines, administering medicine to students. So this is the first read. And then we'll come back for approval at the next meeting. Any discussion on these policies?
Do you have anything to add?
I, I do. As I was reading part of those policies, I think we really need to look at, when someone is a designee, because there's not a nurse there or something like that, what's the training apparatus that we're going to implement to make sure that there, those folks are comfortable doing what's required?
Right.
I, I think that's an important point because you, we want to make sure that they, they feel competent. So I would say that we're gonna have to draw up something that kind of spells out the responsibility.
Okay.
Even though they're, you know, it holds them harmless, they're gonna be more comfortable doing that and volunteering to do that if they know the parameters at the onset.
Okay. So we all have a chance to read these before the next meeting?
Yeah.
Do you have any? Mm-hmm. Yes.
With regards to the curriculum adoption... It was my understanding that we were going to be doing, or that... it was my understanding that we were going to be doing, or that there was supposed to be some revamping to include membership from the public on the
Right.
curriculum
The science?
Committees.
Right.
Yeah.
And being as how this, you know, there's changes on this and we haven't ended up, or actually the past board had not gotten into this.
Right.
I think we need to go ahead and end up taking a look at what we have currently in place at our level, making changes to include participation of the public.
Right.
And I don't know that we need to end up making, or stipulating that we have certain number of parents or whatever, but we, instead of just teachers, we do need to end up having inclusiveness from the parents, from maybe not parents, but other stakeholders as well.
Yeah, we need, so the, the guidelines now are such, you're gonna have to have teachers, parents, community members. They're gonna have to post an agenda and they're gonna have to take minutes.
Right.
Right.
It's like a regular meeting.
Like, just like a regular meetings.
And they're also gonna be subject to the open meetings law.
Right.
Naturally, once a committee is established, they've got to be trained on the open meeting law.
Correct.
But we haven't ended up doing that at least in the times that I've been here.
Right.
Well
We do need to end up incorporating that.
Yeah, we, we do have, because we have a science adoption that we're supposed to be running. So we're gonna have to do that
Right.
for, so we can get going on it.
Right.
Because it's holding up the process right now.
I think what we need to do is probably advertise it and see if we can get some members of the public to be interested in it.
Right. Okay, so we are on the first read. It will come for approval at the next meeting. So do your homework.
It's very dry.
Do your homework.
I've been through it once already. It's, it's, yes, it's
Okay, so on to 4.8, board retreat in June. I know Dr. Papalardo would like to
Madam President and members of the board, Friday, that just came up today.
You want us to do homework, huh?
I do. You know, it's time for goal setting, strategic planning. So I would like to, with your permission, schedule it for June 19th. Because by that time, I'll have a retreat with all the administrative staff.
Okay.
Okay, so I can incorporate that into it. I like to start early, but
Don't you get me started.
I know, right?
So 10 o'clock, is that good?
That's
Ten?
10 a.m.
Right?
Ten?
10, 10 p.m.
Seven.
Let's do 10 p.m. I'm just kidding.
No, no, no.
Killing me right now.
I'll be well rested by then.
No. Okay, let's come to a consensus on time, if you'd like.
Okay, I say 10 a.m.
Seven would be fine.
Hey, hey, hey.
There's nothing
Ms. Ross, does the 19th work for you?
Um, well, do we, do we have like an approximate time?
Well, that's what we're
No, as far as how long this meeting will run?
It's gonna be pretty long.
Is it an all dayer?
Yeah, it's gonna be all day.
All right.
That I would plan on all day.
All right, I'll make it work.
Okay, 10 a.m. work for you?
Yeah.
Mrs. Campbell, let them pick their times.
What, what time would you like, Ms. Ross?
Um, 10 is fine.
There you go. Look at that, that's two so far. I just gotta get one more. Come on, Mr. Bowers, you're a nice person like me.
I can, I can do whenever the board needs me to be there, so.
10 a.m., Mr. Bowers says. Okay, I'll take that as a 10 a.m. You could, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Ms. Garcia, do 19th work for you?
So actually, I'm gonna be honest, my son's coming back from Japan for the race for six months.
Okay.
And I don't know, the timeframe is between the 9th and the 20th.
Okay.
So I'll commit to the 19th, but if he gets off that plane, I'm gonna be
Yeah, just give us time, yeah, just give us notice and we can always
Yeah, if you get a better time, then we can, we can move it.
Yeah, it's gonna be like, well, Gil knows this, it'll be like last minute, you know?
Yeah.
So
Okay, so we'll just
So I'll just plan for it and then
Maximum flexibility without turning into a plate of spaghetti.
Right. Okay, so June 19th, 10 a.m., Mr. Concho?
10 a.m.?
Where's my gavel? I should be banging that right now. Yay!
You come in at 10, Mr. Papalardo and I already have the meeting taken care of.
I'd be willing to do seven.
Just take notes, people, just take notes.
I said no.
That's good. I'll see you on the 19th at 10 a.m. You could come early and have coffee with Mr. Dr. Papalardo.
Yeah, right.
Okay.
We have the substance of the meeting already taken care of.
I'm, I'll be here with you, Gil, 7 o'clock, I'm in.
Let me just make sure I put on my calendar.
I'm gonna be here at 7.
I'm, I'm in with you.
Okay. Thank you. All right.
10 a.m.
Listen. I'll deal with you outside, let's go. Okay.
My God, half the board
Action items. Matters on which the governing board may take legal action during the meeting. 5.1, possible action on the ASBA 2023 political agenda. I'm gonna let Mr. Bowers do that and then you can name, so it's in the motion.
So I move to approve the following items as the AGUSD Board's top five picks. Number one, fully restore ninth and 13th grade CTE/CTED eligibility and funding to increase access to work-based learning and expand the window of opportunities students have to complete industry-recognized CTE programs. Sorry, I have to read these word for word. Number two, amend the constitutional aggregate expenditure limit to reflect current education funding levels and priorities via legislative referral to the voters. Number three, provide full-time funding for preschool programs in the K-12 funding formula. Number four, eliminate unfunded mandates and administrative burdens. Number five, advocate to preserve and protect the voter's original intent of Prop 301. Protect voters' intent in funding K-12 education and oppose legislation that attempts to supplant or divert additional voter-approved funding streams. And then as our two alternates, number one, state standardized testing should not be used for any purpose other than a year-over-year measurement of student growth in the tested subject. Rethink and redefine the role and purpose of standardized testing and develop meaningful assessments and other measurable outcomes. And finally, provide funding to individual districts to implement locally-directed school safety programs as well as student mental health and well-being initiatives.
Okay, we have a motion to approve those. Bless you, bless you.
Thank you.
Um, would somebody like to make a second?
A second.
Ms. Garcia, seconds. Mr. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Concho?
Yes.
And I'm, yes, that motion passes 5 to 0. 5.2, possible discussion and action on staff retention, signing bonuses for certified staff in the amount of $2,500, classified staff $1,500, and a 4% stipend for 2023, 2024 school year to be paid out of ESRS III grant. Somebody like to make a motion?
I just have a quick question.
Sure.
So how much, I don't, sorry, I should have asked this earlier, but how much do we have left in ESRS III? Okay, sorry.
I don't.
Okay, all right. Because I was under the impression that we had spent it all, but we, we have some? Okay, all right.
There's, there's funds in there.
Okay, and then what's, what's the payment schedule gonna be for this? Is it just gonna be one big payment or is it gonna be spread out?
Correct, it's, it's given at, I believe, next, we, we try to give it just before fall break, which this fall will be September 29th.
Okay.
And it'll be broken out, I attach the salary schedule based on your start date.
Okay.
The $2,500 and the $1,500.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Nope. Somebody like to make a motion?
Madam President, I move that we go ahead and approve the staff retention signing bonuses for certified staff in the amount of $2,500, classified staff $1,500, and a 4% stipend for 2023, 2024 school year to be paid out of ESRS III grant funds.
We have a motion, somebody like to second?
Second.
Mr. Bowers, seconds. Mr. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Concho?
Yes.
And I'm, yes, that motion passes 5 to 0. 5.3, possible action on the exempt and non-exempt staff salary rearranging for 2023, 2024. Now, I just have a question on this one. So which, so are those positions in the green and the red the ones that we're just approving?
Correct. It was what I presented up back on April 25th.
Right. And then, so some of them fall under the the Director of Educational Services? Is that true?
One of them does, yes.
One of them does. So do we have to approve this tonight or can we hold off until we fill that position?
Well, it's, it's not his position.
No, 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 I know, but it falls under, so that that person can have some kind of, can understand him. Maybe Dr. Papalardo can kind of work with them on this salary schedule?
Could we, could I suggest we approve the rest of it and exclude that single position?
That, that's the grant analysis one? Is that the one?
Correct.
Okay, yeah, because that one falls under
Correct.
Okay.
So you could take that out.
Are you guys, yeah, I'm fine with that. I just want that person to be able to, to have some kind of say in that.
Okay.
If you guys are
So Madam President, you'd have to revise the motion to
Right.
exclude that one.
Right.
And then the rest of it.
So we're excluding, what did you say, the grant?
The grant analysis, because they usually work directly under the Director of Educational Service and we have to fill that position. So I figured let that, let's fill that position, let that person work with that person or position.
I feel like there's some confusion with this grant analysis
I know.
Because I feel like last year, we approved a couple people to increase in their salaries. So I think we need to look at that and talk about it.
Let's, let's get somebody in there and then work on it. Okay? Okay, so possible action on, where am I? Okay, the possible action on the exempt and non-exempt staff salary arranging for 2023, 2024. Somebody like to make a motion and just remove the grants analysis position? For, for now?
Madam President, I move to approve the exempt and non-exempt staff salary rearranging for the 2023, 2024 school year excluding the grant analyst position.
Thank you, Mr. Bowers. Would somebody like to second?
Second.
Ms. Garcia, seconds. Mr. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Concho?
Yes.
And I'm, yes, that motion passes 5 to 0. Thank you, Mr. Hazel. 5.4, possible action on Cactus Canyon Junior High gym flooring project. I am so excited. Number BRG, construction dash 02340 in the amount of $143,100. And bleachers project, number BRG, construction 02367 in the amount of $179,550. The project was awarded to Edge Construction. No district funds will be used, amen. I like that. Would somebody like to make a motion?
Madam President, I move to approve the Cactus Canyon Gym Flooring Project, number BRG, construction 02340 in the amount of $143,100. And the Cactus Canyon Bleachers Project, BRG, construction 02367 in the amount of $179,550. And the project was awarded to Edge Construction.
Exciting. We have a motion, somebody like to second?
Second.
Mr. Concho, seconds. Mr. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Ross?
Yes.
Mr. Concho?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
And I'm, yes, that motion passes 5 to 0. Sorry, I jumped over you. 5.5, possible action to convene an executive session pursuant to ARS 15-843A regarding student discipline matter on student A. Would somebody like to make a motion to go into executive session?
Madam President, I move we go into, into executive session pursuant to Arizona Revised Statute 15-843A regarding student discipline matter on student A.
We have a motion, somebody like to second?
A second.
Ms. Garcia, seconds. Mr. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Concho?
Yes.
And I'm, yes, that motion passes 5 to 0. We are going and taking We are going into.
Okay, so, signed contracts. Okay. Anything else?